I'd like to call this January 7th, 2013 Celine City Council Meeting to order. Present tonight are Mayor-elect Marl, Councilmember-elect Burgoyne, Girbaugh, Peters, Rhodes, Roth, and Tahar. Staff present, City Manager Campbell, Clerk Hill, and DPW Director Fordice. At this time, I'd like to call our Judge forward. Oh, my faux pas. Excuse me. Please join me, if you will, in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your Honor. Please raise your right hand. I state your name, please.
I, Brian Marl.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We can have Lee Burgoyne come forward. Same thing. I know you have family.
They're on their way?
Yep.
All right. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Lee Burgoyne.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of councilmember.
The duties of councilmember.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Dean Benjamin Girbaugh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of councilmember.
The duties of councilmember.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You know the routine, so.
Dean Rhodes.
Do you don't have any family?
Does anyone want a substitute?
I state your name.
I, David Rhodes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of councilmember.
The duties of councilmember.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you very much for allowing me to be part of it. Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate it. Okay. I'm gonna need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Hearing note, Mr. Burgoyne.
I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to add the water and sewer rate study.
Okay. That'll be at the end of our discussion items. Is that all right, Mr. Burgoyne? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, let's just do it right now. All right, so in addition to Mr. Burgoyne's request to discuss the water and sewer rate study, the... Which item is it? Clerk Hill?
It is going to be 1306.
So 1306 is subject to modification because we had a few appointments added this evening. So noting those two things, do I... Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries. We have no absences this evening, so we will transition to my State of the City address. Good evening. City Council, City Manager Campbell, Clerk Hill, Representatives-elect Zemke, Driscoll, Prosecutor Mackey, Judge Simpson, and Commissioner Ping, distinguished guests, and my fellow citizens. It's an honor to be here this evening, and I'm humbled by the opportunity to leave the city that I've called home my entire life and a community that I love. Let me begin tonight by acknowledging and thanking my immediate predecessor. I stand today in the shadow of Celine's longest-serving mayor and the city's first female mayor. She is truly a trailblazer who has dedicated much of her life to serving the citizens of Celine, and our community has benefited in tangible ways from her service. I'd like to take a moment to thank her and acknowledge outgoing mayor and now State Representative Gretchen Driscoll for her years of service and dedication, and we wish her well in her new role representing the 52nd House District in Lansing. Thank you, Gretchen. And although he is not in attendance this evening, I would also like to acknowledge and thank former city attorney Alan Grossman for his more than 50 years of exemplary service to our city. Speaking for the entire city council, we are truly indebted to him for all that he has done for our community, and we wish Alan and his family the very best of luck in their future endeavors. We live in an exceptional community, and the city of Celine is strong. The hard work done by community leaders up to this point has positioned our city well. However, we are at a fork in the road. Across our state and nationally, the role of municipal government is evolving and in some cases fundamentally changing. Our cause is too important, and time is too precious to waste a moment. I plan to partner with my city council colleagues, city staff, and community stakeholders to develop forward-thinking, proactive solutions for our city's future. Together, we must act boldly to face the challenges Celine faces. We cannot pass our problems off onto our successors or the next generation. We must lead. These decisions will not always be easy, and they may not always be popular, but they're absolutely necessary. Short-term or one-time fixes and gimmicks are not leadership, and the path of least resistance is always downhill. Together, we must act decisively to do what's best for our community. Primary to our effort is reaffirming our support and commitment to public safety. Residents and business owners cite our quality public safety programs as one of the city's biggest strengths, and with good reason. Without safety and security, other important aspects of a community suffer, things like economic development and growth and a sense of community. As a city, we must work hard to empower public safety staff to ensure that policies and procedures are appropriate and up-to-date. Poor policies or inadequate resources will not be tolerated. They can hamstring frontline employees and their abilities to do their job effectively, and city leaders must work to ensure that proper safeguards are in place to support their important work. Economic development is another component integral to Celine's short-term and long-term success. While we remain supportive of our larger businesses currently occupying space in our industrial park, I believe as a community, we must focus on nurturing new and growing small businesses and entrepreneurial projects. Celine is already a center for creativity and innovation, and I know my council colleagues share my enthusiasm for working hard to cultivate residents' good ideas. For businesses of all sizes, city government will take an active role in fostering more and better communication between private and public sectors. Excuse me. To this end, the city will moderate forums and host events for businesses to share ideas and solutions, encouraging discussion among businesses and with city leadership and staff. In the coming months, a priority of council will be a systematic and thorough review of all regulations so that policies are not unnecessarily or overly burdensome to businesses seeking growth and expansion. The city recently received a strategic business plan for attracting and retaining businesses prepared by Ann Arbor Spark, and we must work to realize the goals and objectives outlined in that plan, and that's only possible through collaboration. City leaders and staff must work with our economic development boards and must build on existing relationships and partnerships with Spark, MEDC, the Michigan Small Business Technical Development Center, the Celine Main Street Program, and our local chamber. Not as captivating, but extremely important, is ensuring that Celine's infrastructure is supported and maintained. We must work together, and quickly, to develop a plan for reliable funding stream to maintain our infrastructure, including not only our streets and sewer systems, but also city sidewalks. Focusing on walkability and developing more non-motorized pathways to connect key areas within our city will make Celine an even more family-friendly community. In developing the city budget for this year and in planning for the future, we must achieve a balance between adequately funding our most needed and vital programs and services while ensuring that we spend responsibly and wisely. City government should never ask for more of people's hard-earned dollars than is absolutely necessary. The economic downturn has hit families and businesses hard, and it's taken a toll on our fund balance. Council and stakeholders must work collaboratively and actively in coming years to grow our fund balance, to protect our residents, and secure our city's future. In the upcoming budget cycle, rest assured that every option is on the table. Every line item will be scrutinized and reviewed for potential cost savings, reforms, and restructuring, and I will do everything in my power to ensure that the process is open. And I look forward to an honest discussion with my council colleagues, city staff, and residents, and other stakeholders about ideas to move our city forward. In order to function effectively, government must be open and accessible to the people it serves. In the coming months and years, I would like our city to use technology and social media even more effectively to communicate interactively on residents' concerns, questions, and suggestions. Our website already has a wealth of information available, and I want to make sure it's as user-friendly and informative, excuse me, as our citizens demand and as they deserve. In recent years, council has talked about convening town hall and public meetings to discuss issues and better inform citizens, and I'm committed to helping make this happen. We've also discussed convening issue-specific task forces utilizing councilmembers, city staff, and also private citizens, whose perspective will lend a fresh, different voice that will enrich and improve our city's work. I'm sure everyone here would agree that one of Celine's greatest assets is our people. As mayor, a central goal of mine is empowering our citizens to participate in their community. Anytime an individual is willing to give his or her time to make our city better, I am committed to helping them become involved in some tangible way. That involvement could take countless forms, from volunteering on a city board or commission, serving on a homeowners association, participating in a service club, or working on the governing board of a church community. In recent years, our community received the high honor of being acknowledged by CNN, Money Magazine, and Bloomberg News as an ideal place to live and raise children. We earned this recognition in part because of good governance, but also because of our strong school system and because of our people, and I'm proud to be part of a community of good people who, when they see a need, they're willing to step in and fill that void and improve the world around them. One of my heroes, President John F. Kennedy, famously paraphrased biblical texts when he said, "To whom much is given, much is expected." For my whole life, the people of Celine have showed me how to live up to that sentiment. Again, I am very humbled and grateful for the opportunity to be with you tonight, and I look forward to working together to do what's best for our community. I'm proud to stand with my dedicated and talented colleagues on city council: David Rhodes, Linda Tahar, Dean Girbaugh, Jim Peters, Jim Roth, and Lee Burgoyne, and I want to thank them for their service. This is a difficult time to serve in government, particularly municipal government, because people's ideas and expectations are fluid, and they're changing. The paradigm shift may be a challenge, but it's also an opportunity to think creatively, to find new solutions to old problems. I believe that through bold, decisive leadership, we can confront our challenges head-on and emerge stronger. And yes, I still believe that Celine's best days are ahead of us. Thank you. God bless you, and God bless Celine. Thank you all. We are actually going to dive right into our meeting here, so if there are those of you who need to leave, you are welcome to do so, and we greatly appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda this evening is a letter of recognition for Timothy Cummings. Timothy couldn't be here tonight. Actually, Tim Cummings is how we all refer to him. Tim managed and oversaw video production and the recording of city council meetings since 1999, and we're indebted to his service. And so, the clerk and I have rendered this letter of recognition, excuse me. I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but I do want to wish Tim the best in his future endeavors and thank him for his years of service, and we'll be sure to get this to him. Next up, we have our folks from Celine Main Street: Cindy Jupko, who's the board chair, and Bob Rosenberg. Good evening. Thank you for being here, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you for having us and giving us this opportunity. Give me a second to get hooked up, and we'll make a go of it, maybe. So I don't see that this is working, but at worst-case scenario, I'll work with, just from the slides, and speak to them. To expedite the process, let me begin by thanking you for inviting us here this evening to talk about Celine Main Street, to show you where we've been and where we're headed. Our mission statement, which would have been up there, is to enhance the vitality of downtown Celine as the social, cultural, economic, and historic heart of our community. It's an important responsibility, and we take it seriously. Our mission's... Tech help. So... Thanks, Chase. I don't have a screen now either, so here we go. Ta-da. Bob presents. Okay. Yeah, it's mine, too, so it's okay. There you go. Cool. So bear with me just a moment.
I think you go to View, and then View Slideshow, if I'm not mistaken, Bob.
We're good. We're good. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Sorry about that. Okay, so that is our mission statement, and we achieve our mission through the Main Street Program, which is a four-point approach. We have four teams designed to help us reach our goals, and they are the Promotion Team, the Design Team, the Business and Economic Restructuring Team, and the Organization Team. We rely on volunteers. We need volunteers. They help us to do the things we need to do to help keep downtown Celine vibrant and alive and attractive to people who come to our town. We have a volunteer program which includes volunteer sponsor program and a volunteer recruitment and retention program, and I'm proud to announce on Celine Main Street's behalf that Quantum Signal and Bank of Ann Arbor are our 2013 volunteer program sponsors, and they will help us run our complete volunteer program. Volunteers are important, and just to give you a view or an idea of how important they are, Oktoberfest, which I think was a great activity for our town, took almost 800 volunteer hours to put on. So we do need volunteers. We do need volunteers. We love our volunteers, and if you are interested in learning more about the volunteer opportunity, you can go to our website, www.celinemainstreet.org, or you can call the phone number. We absolutely have to raise funds in order to be successful. We have just launched our Thousand Friends campaign. We want to engage the community and get as many individuals as possible. We set a goal of 1,000, but we'd love to go over that. We also have a corporate sponsorship program which we just kicked off. It is a one-time ask that covers the entire year. We're working on an idea for a signature fundraising event, and it's going to celebrate the arts in our community, and we're excited about it, but we still have a lot of work to do to make it come to fruition, so I'll just tease you and tell you there'll be more to come. Memberships. We're now a member of a nonprofit network, the Nonprofit Network, and we use that to educate our board and make us the best nonprofit that we can possibly be. Cindy, who's our president, and Jill, who is our secretary, attended a workshop in Jackson recently, and they're bringing back great information that will help us be good at what we do. We're also in the process of putting together a downtown newsletter. It will be out soon, hopefully this week. You can sign up to get the newsletter by going to our website. Let's talk a little bit about the teams. The Design Team has worked on the Alley Project. The Alley Project, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, is the alley behind Mangiamo and Brecken Grill. We're working on that to make it a beautiful place for people to stop, maybe not this month, but during the warmer months to enjoy sitting outside, maybe having a meal, or a snack, or a beverage. We've shored up the concrete, and we've begun, but we're on a hiatus until the spring when the weather's a little nicer. We also received a grant from Let's Save Michigan's It's About Place campaign to help us with the funding of that project, and that's exciting news. We put in for it, and we got it. The Design Team is also working on reviewing the 2007 physical design plan so that we can bring consensus to an overall downtown physical design master plan. Our Business and Economic Success Team applied to the Michigan Main Street Center for Services to complete a comprehensive market study. I believe we will earn that. I'm certainly hopeful, and we should soon hear, probably, I'm hoping, this week. Megan... I'm sorry. Dorothea, Mego Dowling, and I attended a Main Street quarterly training. I mentioned Dorothea because she is the team leader of the Business and Economic Success Team. That was a great training session. It gave us a lot of great information that we brought back, and Dorothea's already putting it into practice with her team. We're also working on maps of the downtown area, and we want to welcome Hensel Kenpo Karate, which opened this Saturday officially. I'm sure most of you are aware of that, but it's exciting to have a new business in town. Recently, the Promotion Team worked on the Holiday Flip Book. It's a last-minute gift-giving ideas, and I wanted to kind of share a little of that with you because it's... Well, that's not what I wanted to do. Bear with me for just a moment. Let's see. The flip book. Well, it's beautiful. I wish I could show it to you. Anyway, it was an electronic flip book that had last-minute gift-giving ideas and happy holidays wishes from our merchants. It went out via our website, and also the merchants sent it around, and it was exciting. It was designed to create awareness and promote the entire downtown area. We reached over 15,000 people on Facebook alone. It was posted on Celine Post on our own website, and the businesses emailed it to their clients, and it got a great acceptance by the business members. The Promotion Team, the Celine Downtown Merchants Association, which served our community for a long time, had many of the same goals as Celine Main Street, so we're kind of folding those two together. The Celine Downtown Merchants Association is no longer an entity, but they will be working with us to reach the goals that they had for those many years. The Organization Team is working on a budget for next year. All our teams are working on finalizing our work plans for 2013, and when they are finalized, we will post them on our website so that you can see where we're headed. And a kind reminder that Winterfest is coming, January 26th. It starts at 9:00 a.m. In the morning, there are kids' games and crafts, ice carving demonstrations, and for those who like their outdoor activities indoors, a Uker tournament. In the afternoon, there's a snow building competition, ice skating demonstrations, free skating on our ice rink, VYOS, bring your own skates, and we're going to have food. Food. And there also are warm weather activities if we don't get good weather. I've been watching the weather, and it looks like it's going to get warm towards the end of the week, and that's, I hope, good news because that means it's going to be Winterfest weather following that. Right?
Right.
Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to present to you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. Were there any questions for Bob about his monthly presentation? Mr. Burgoyne.
How much was the place grant?
$500.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, and I would just, as sort of a call to action, directly relating to my State of the City address, which is, we know that the Main Street Program has a proven track record in a number of other communities to help revitalize and grow and see their downtown, their core area prosper. So for those of you in the audience, or for those of you who will be listening at home, if you want to get involved, Main Street is another great way to volunteer and contribute something tangible in the community. So thank you again, Bob. Okay, so moving on to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Any public comments? None? Okay. Then, moving on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve and adopt as submitted.
It's been moved by Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
As amended, excuse me. You're comfortable moving it as amended?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries. Moving on to new business, item 13-10, the appointment of mayor pro tem for 2013. This will be a motion to appoint Councilmember Linda Tahar to serve as mayor pro tem for the year 2013.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Girbaugh, seconded by... I'll let Mr. Roth take it. Any discussion? No? Ms. Tahar.
I would just like to say thank you very much for your consideration, and it's an honor to have this opportunity to serve in this way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you'll do an exceptional job. So hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business, item 13-11, 2013 Winterfest 5K. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of an application for a community event slash use of public ways from Cindy Barnett on behalf of the Winterfest Committee for a 5K run, to acknowledge receipt of the December 12, 2012 memo from Police Chief Rennick, and the January 2, 2013 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, to approve or not approve the Winterfest 5K run to be held on January 26, 2013, beginning at 9:00 a.m., utilizing city streets as depicted on their map, subject to the following conditions: One, that traffic engineer issue the required temporary traffic control orders; Two, that the Main Street, that Celine Main Street, excuse me, provide liability insurance with the City of Celine as an endorsed additional insured party for the event on file; and that all costs for the 5K event for police and DPW services, above and above, over and above, excuse me, normal operating cost estimated at $426.80 be waived or paid by the applicant.
Move to approve and waive.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Rhodes and seconded by Mr. Peters to approve and waive. I do believe we have Ms. Barnett and also a Mr. Sterns here to present on behalf of this motion. Thank you.
Go ahead. I better speak to the mayor.
Thank you, sorry, we're a little unprepared, we didn't realize we were on the agenda until about 20 minutes ago, so. We, the purpose of putting the race on is to benefit two beneficiaries, one, we're looking at benefiting the Celine Middle School Cross Country Program, as well as the Mike Smith Scholarship Fund. Mike Smith's been a mainstay in this community for a long time in terms of cross-country and track, and the high school has started a, and the parents have started a scholarship fund on his behalf, to award to high school students with a $500 scholarship each year, trying to begin funding that program, so this is one of the reasons that we're doing this race, as well as helping the Celine Middle School Cross Country Program, as well to fund some of our costs that occurred during the year. This past year, we hosted the SEC Meet at Celine, and had to accommodate 250 runners at Mill Pond Park and all the expenses that go along with that, so it took up quite a bit of our budget, and we're trying to replenish our budget, as well as help out the 90-plus runners that we have participate in our program on a yearly basis. In terms of the actual run itself, we're trying to highlight some of the good features of Celine, as well as tie into the Winterfest program. Winterfest, obviously, will be going on that day, our intent is to finish downtown, so that we're close to the Winterfest activities and can hopefully draw more people into the Winterfest, as well as highlighting the new path that was just built this year, that is one of the areas that we plan to take this course down, is to start on, actually right out here in front of City Hall, and take the new path up by the library, and then go on to school property, come back on the roads, and we're actually looking at potentially adding in a loop through Henny Field there at the end of the race as well, so we can really tie into the paths and everything that they have to offer in the Celine community.
Thank you both. Are there any questions, Mr. Roth?
I have a question for as, again, the profits will be going to cross-country, middle school cross-country, and a scholarship fund.
That's correct.
And what expenses do you incur for putting on this race?
We have expenses, usually with a race, you need to provide t-shirts to your participants, we have numbers that we will have to purchase, and then the timing, that can also be an expense that we can incur.
Okay, what fees do you charge?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars per person.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Are there any additional questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Any discussion regarding this motion? Mr. Roth.
I'm in favor of approving it, but I question for as waiving the fees. Because of where it's going to, it opens ourselves up for other organizations that we may not be able to afford, so since it's not directly involved with the city itself, I see a separation there, that if there's fees charged, that they should incur an expense. And my understanding that it's estimated at, that may be a high estimation, so it may be coming much less than that, so that may not be as big a burden as it may appear to be.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Any additional discussion regarding this motion? Mr. Rhodes.
I don't have an opinion one way or the other on Councilmember Roth's comment there, but I did want to say that Cindy and Derek have both put on many races, 5Ks, run walks within the community, and they do an excellent job of organizing them and protecting the participants, and I personally want to thank them for the time and effort that they put into this.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Ms. Tahar.
Yes, I also wanted to say that I really appreciated the fact that the new path from Brecken Park to the library was included, I think that's a great addition to this, to the route. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes, or Mr. Roth, excuse me.
I was wondering if it's possible, whereas with this motion, when we come to vote on it, we can separate it in two different parts? One, to approve the race, the second, as far as the financial part?
Well, there's a motion on the floor that's been properly moved and seconded to approve, and then to waive the fees. I suppose you could make an amendment, if you were determined to have the $426.00 in some odd sense paid by the applicant.
Well, I want to clarify that, it's only an estimate of what it may cost, but I would like to see that it could go through, but I feel strongly about far as if we're judicially spending taxpayers' money.
Would you, would you like to offer an amendment, then?
Yes, I'd like to offer amendment that we would split it in two separate votes.
I second.
Okay. Yeah, after conferring with City Clerk Hill, we really can't entertain a motion to split the two issues, you can move a motion to request that the estimated amount be paid, if that's your wish.
That's not my wish. My wish is that any expense incurred with it, that they would pay, and I would disagree with the values put there for as estimated amount, that could come in less. If they had people within the department, say the police department or so on, had volunteers would volunteer their time, that would reduce the cost.
I mean, the idea is to help everybody here, but we'd be taking money out of our own pocket, but we would be willing to, you know, at least try to pay 200, I mean, so we're, because that, we're trying to make money for our program and help it out, so if necessary, if it would help everybody out, we would pay 200, if that would be all right with Ms. Hill.
Okay, I appreciate that, Ms. Barnett. Clerk Hill, based on what you said, Mr. Roth, Clerk Hill has prepared language for an amendment, I want to see if this would be amenable to you.
Agreed.
Okay, I have moved Roth, seconded Burgoyne, to amend the motion that the actual costs, that the actual costs for police and DPW services over and above the normal cost be paid for by the applicant.
That's exactly what I had intended.
That's appropriate?
Yes, very appropriate.
I would second that, if you limit it to 200, they're saying that they could pay 200, I don't mind the limit.
Are you amenable to that, Mr. Roth?
No.
Okay.
I do not second.
All right. All right, so then Mr. Roth has moved the motion that Clerk Hill just articulated, is there a second to that motion, that amendment, excuse me? Okay, there is no second, so that amendment dies. Mr. Burgoyne, would you like to offer an alternative amendment?
I would like to make the motion that they pay the costs up to 200, the actual costs up to 200, if the actual costs are 150, then they pay 150, if they 200 or more, they pay 200.
Okay, so we can do this one of two ways, you can offer that as an amendment, or the mover and second, which is Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Peters, can agree to that change.
Are you asking if I agree?
Yes, sir.
And I do not agree, I want to continue on with the motion as I moved it to begin with, and if we wish to begin to change how we apportion city costs over and above normal, then that's something that this council ought to address specifically and set up a policy, because we waive many of these fees for other organizations and activities whose end result may well result in funds that get distributed to other organizations within the community, so I think it's inappropriate to try to change it for this one specific event at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, I appreciate those comments, and I would echo what my good colleague, Mr. Rhodes, just expressed, which is, for most events and community endeavors, we waive fees, and we're not being fiscally or financially, you know, we're trying our best to do, to spend wisely and appropriately with the resources we have. The issue here with the 5K, and with so many other events and endeavors that seek city approval, is there really quality of life issues, they enhance the quality of life in our community, and they're important, and I for one want to encourage applications like this, so, like Mr. Rhodes, I support the motion that he moved, and that Mr. Peters seconded. Mr. Gearbaugh.
I agree, I'm supporting Mr. Rhodes' original motion, because we have looked at this as being another one of the events that we put on during the year, last year we did it with a similar type of run in it, I know there's an understanding that the money's going to be used towards a scholarship and such, but I think there's a limited amount of dollars that's supporting, that I've been wanting to have support, these type of events, and I think that falls within this, and this is at least part of Winterfest, if it was on its own, by itself, I'd be a lot more concerned, but because we're trying to make Winterfest a popular event, and one that brings everybody within the entire town into different areas, this is part of our economic development, part of our Main Street, part of our whole goal for the city, so the dollar amounts that are here are not as significant as we have on other events, and I think this is an appropriate way of handling it.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Mr. Burgoyne.
Is this organization a nonprofit organization, or I'm not understanding what type of organization is sponsoring the run.
The middle school, the Celine Middle School, we don't, we're just, it's funding, we, like Derek just said, we had the SEC Conference Championships, we were at Mill Pond, and our team, you know, I am responsible for getting timers and getting, you know, that done for 250 middle school runners.
So it's a community organization?
It's a community organization, and Mike Smith is the high school cross-country coach, has been for 31 years, and just so everybody knows, right now, the Celine High School girls are ranked fifth in the nation, so it's a, you know, it's a good program, and we're just trying to keep, you know, reward the runners that do participate, and you probably see us running through the streets all the time.
And it's a program.
That wasn't clear to me.
It's a program that doesn't cut anybody either, we have, you know, everybody participates, they participate all season long, so.
Is that it, Mr. Burgoyne?
Absolutely, I just didn't know.
No, that's fair. Mr. Peters, did you have a comment?
Just to say that my motion, my second stands, and I appreciate your efforts, and this is, a lot of work goes into these, and although it is taxpayers' dollars, I don't think it's a great deal of money, and let's not forget, there's an awful lot of young families and people in this community that want these kind of activities, and they are, they like to see the taxpayer's dollars be spent in this manner, so I support this effort, and I wish you well, it's a worthwhile event.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. I would be remiss, Mr. Burgoyne, if I didn't allow you the opportunity to submit a motion similar to what you expressed earlier.
No, I really do not, I misunderstood what the organization was, it's the type of organization that should be, should get the fees waived.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Roth.
I certainly appreciate, and don't want any misunderstandings of what your endeavors are, what the race does, your cause, I appreciate that. My question is, and I think we need to take a look as far as what from Mr. Rhodes' comments about, as far as what has been done in the past, where city monies has been spent, I think we need to review that particular policy, especially when funds are becoming tight and difficult, I kind of also question as far as we spending taxpayer money and giving it away as an event, something like this, for a particular cause, if that's due diligence with our monies that we receive from the taxpayers, but I certainly appreciate all your efforts and what you're doing, so please don't take that as, I'm against what you're doing, I look at it, if you do some of these particular events, you're charging a cost for it, that should, that should, if you're charging a fee, the fee should be sufficient enough to cover your cost and make a profit. So there's where I'm coming from, so I'm not against the event or so on, I was against as far as seeing this agenda item tied together with two, that we couldn't separate that out, but I think Mr. Rhodes came up with a good idea, as an activity that we need to do as a city council, kind of clarifying that, especially in a state when funds are tight.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Any further discussion? No, well, let's vote on the motion, then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you both, appreciate it. Moving on to new business, item 13-12, Winterfest and Holiday Parade Banners. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Celine Main Street Manager Bob Rosenberg, and the January 2, 2013 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, to approve or not approve the Winterfest banners to be hung by DPW in the four-block historic downtown district as requested by Celine Main Street. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes moved, and seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. Any discussion? Bob, would you like to discuss this at all, or? No, okay.
I just think it helps beautify downtown and make people aware of our downtown area, and that benefits our merchants, and that benefits our community.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that you consider.
Thank you. Mr. Gearbaugh.
Just real quick, I know there was a concern from our Department of Public Works and the ability to schedule in all types of these events, so if this doesn't get up as one of their first priorities, or we have a snowstorm or something that prevents or delays that, I hope there will be an understanding that may be an issue, so we're looking at, because of our resources and our limitations of those, that we'll have to look at how these events are handled and taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business, item 13-13, Rentschler Farm National Register of Historic Places nomination. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 2, 2013 memo from the Historic District Commission, Jeff Fordice, to authorize or not authorize the mayor to sign and review report, sign, wait, sign the review report, and that the report be forwarded to the State Historic Preservation Review Board for further consideration.
Motion to authorize.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Burgoyne, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Fordice, would you like to come up and talk about this issue a little bit more?
Thank you. I'd like to bring up the Chair of the Historic District Commission, Cynthia Christensen, she is the author of the application, as well as the Chair of the AGC, and this process began several years ago when a group of Eastern Michigan University graduate students studied a number of properties in the city, and then, as a group project, prepared a National Register nomination for the farmstead. As with a lot of student projects, when you have multiple authors and people working on the same project, you get some mixed results sometimes, so there was a lot of good value there, a lot of good information, but it needed to be honed and refined and corrected in some cases, and that's what Cynthia stepped up and did, and we, she has taken it to the state and gone back and forth a little bit, and I'd like to let her talk about some of the efforts that she's gone through, and then where we stand right now.
Thank you. This has been a long process, but as some of you know, but the process is a good one. The Michigan Historic Preservation Office probably has one of the best National Register reviewers in the country, he has never had, to my knowledge, had, never has had one rejected. He goes over every word, every dot in the National Register nomination to make sure that it's perfect. I know in this particular case, he's also already conferred with the National Parks person, who is his counterpart, who will review it at that level, to make sure that it will be good. So at this point, in this stage, it has already been okayed and reviewed by the Celine Historic District Commission, it now needs to be signed by the mayor. After that, it will go to the Michigan Historic Preservation Council on the 25th the 25th of January, and they will review it and give their okay. And it will then go off to the National Parks, to the keeper of the records, and they will review it. And they have about 45 days in which to make that designation, and then they will let us know that it has passed. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Fordice or Ms. Christians? Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes. What are, I've said of three questions. What are local criteria A and B on which this is based? As, you know, the application says this is based on local criteria A and B. And then, secondly, the, in some, in some communities that I've lived in, in other states, not in the state of Michigan, if you go on to the national register, then the owner has an impediment to any change or even modification or maintenance and so forth. It's got a lot of red tape. And my understanding was, I just want to hear it, that my understanding was that Michigan does not have that. I mean, you could sell or demolish or change it or rebuild it or whatever without impediment. So it does not cause that impediment.
Right. Your question is, is that you're worried and concerned that there will be other infringements on the rights of the city as with this property.
For the future, yeah.
Right. First of all, on the federal level, there are no national register police. They don't come out. They don't make any comments, anything about the national register. Some states, on a state level, will have a more of a regulations like a historic district. The state of Michigan is not one of those. So as far as a national register nomination, once it's nominated, it's still the city's property. You can tear it down, sell it, do whatever changes they want, whenever you want, because it's still your property and there are no infringements.
And my third question is, this is not in a historic district or not intended to be in a historic district, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And if you, if you don't have A and B right away, it's, I just thought I'd ask, but I'm not, I don't care that much if you don't have it right away. Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne.
We have that information. Criteria A is that the property is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the-
To our history at a local level.
The local history, right. And then C is that the, it embodies distinctive characteristics of a type period or method of construction.
Meaning that it's a farmstead, an intact farmstead, and a very good representation.
Typical and descriptive of that style. I do want to touch on one, make sure that we're all perfectly clear. There is one tiny little restriction that comes with national register listing, but in fact, it also comes with being eligible for listing. So that restriction is already in place because a number of years ago, when MDOT was doing some work, they deemed it eligible for national register status. And that, that restriction is that if there's any federal money involved in a project nearby the property, it has to go through a certain review process. But that's already in place.
But that's not a restriction. That is protection. It's called Section 106. And anytime there is any kind of project that is funded federally, anything that might be affected by that, that is either worthy to be on the national register or already on the national register, is reviewed by the, I can never remember, the advisory council. It goes through a process just to protect it.
Right. And it's already, I mean, that has already happened, as MDOT has proposed some projects on US 12. So that's, that's already been in place. That won't change with this nomination.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
This nomination has been, as was mentioned earlier, a long time coming. And I wanted to personally thank Cynthia and the members of the Celine Area Historical Society and Historic District Commission and Mr. Fordice for their persistence in seeing this effort through. And as I understand it correctly, that once this comes to be, since we are certified local government, we also have the ability to apply for some grant funds that we may not have otherwise. So there's a very positive side to this, in addition to the national recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Hart?
Yes, I, I'm not aware, I wasn't involved or didn't watch the history of this, of this application. But I have to say, I was, I was very impressed reading through it. Congratulations. It's really impressive. And I also had, had the question that Mr. Burgoyne raised about, about whether this designation brought any restrictions with it. So I'm delighted to hear that that's not the case. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Anything else? No? Well, thank you both. Appreciate you being here, presenting on behalf of this, this agenda item. Thanks again. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business item 13-14. This will be a motion to acknowledge the verbal report of Mayor Marl and City Manager Campbell, and to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution submitted to opt out of the proposed regional transit authority. And actually, because there are no written materials besides the resolution itself, and because you're hearing verbal reports from both myself and City Manager Campbell, I think we should probably give those verbal reports first, and then we'll entertain the motion on the advice of Clerk Hill. So, and I regret that our county commissioner, Alicia Ping, had to leave because she's been actively involved in this issue and has informed both the city and manager, both the city manager and I, excuse me, as this, this issue has come to fruition. But many of you are probably aware that during the lame duck period, a regional transit authority bill moved very quickly through both the House and Senate, and then was signed into law by Governor Snyder. And that regional authority includes Washtenaw County. There was some confusion at first that it would only include Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County, but now it includes Washtenaw County as well. And there's some real concerns with that, not the least of which being, as we suspect, that most of the services, most of the amenities will benefit the large metropolitan areas in those three other counties and not Washtenaw. In addition to that, the law creates a new taxing authority. And I, for one, believe that our citizens are going to be pressed from, receive pressure from a variety of entities needing additional revenue in the upcoming years. And many of these entities are going to need additional revenue for vital core services. And I don't believe that a regional transit authority, including Washtenaw, along with Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne County, is one of those vital services. It's especially concerning, and Mr. Campbell has articulated this in the past, that a majority of municipalities and units of government in Washtenaw County were not willing to participate in a countywide transit program. So logic would dictate, if they weren't willing to participate in that, they would be even less likely or more unwilling to participate in a regional transit authority, which, again, would benefit Macomb, Oakland, and Wayne County far more than it would Washtenaw. So with that, Mr. Campbell, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I get just a couple of things to reiterate and build upon what Mayor Marl just mentioned about the former, the most recent countywide transit program that had been discussed and had, was, was put up before, for folks. And, and most everyone, including the city of Celine, opted out. And they're kind of going back to the drawing board, as they say, and are working, working towards something different, something that may satisfy the needs, better satisfy the needs of the county. And they're calling the urban core areas of the county to provide transit services. So this was, to me, as I expressed to Mayor Marl, this was kind of, I don't know, I don't want to say under the guise of night, but, but, you know, this was, I think this caught a number of folks by surprise. And I would be, I would not be surprised if a number of our township neighbors, whether or not they know about this or not, that, I mean, because this is, again, this is, they have the authority to tax. And so now, all of a sudden, if this goes through, then the residents of Washtenaw County are going to be taxed on this, this authority that's, that's operated out of Wayne, Wayne County, Macomb, et cetera. So yes, I understand they're about a 45-minute drive, but, you know, the concern is, as Mayor Marl mentioned, we just had this for a countywide, and people weren't happy with it. And so now this, this regional concern is here. So I guess I do have issue with that. So I know, and I can't, unfortunately, as Commissioner Ping had to leave, but my understanding, and I know Mayor Marl's been in pretty good correspondence with her, that there, there are, it's not a unanimous support at the county level either for this, and that the discussions that he's had has been that, I think, some county commissioners, including herself, are encouraging their local counterparts, cities and townships that they represent, villages, to opt out of this. And, and I think, I believe, as my understanding is, that there's a strong likelihood that, that there'll be a push to do that, for the governor to sign an alternative bill that would, that would take, that would carve Washtenaw County out of this regional transportation. But I guess I do have concerns because we, I feel like we're more than arm lengths away from this whole organization, and we weren't really, weren't really in the fold, if you will, as far as information on this whole regional transit.
I should add, and I apologize, that, again, we, we have benefited from Commissioner Ping's leadership and how accessible and engaged she's, she's been with myself and with, with the city manager and city staff on this issue. And the resolution that we, we are presenting and proposing be adopted this evening, I believe, is almost identical to, to a document that the Ann Arbor City Council adopted at one of their last meetings. So again, there seems to be a consensus across Washtenaw County to, to opt out of, of this regional transit authority. And additionally, there is some hope that in this new legislative session, which begins on Wednesday, that there may be some effort by legislators in both the House and Senate to offer amendments which would, among other things, remove Washtenaw County from this transit authority. But again, in the meantime, we thought it was prudent to bring this to your attention in the hopes that we could move forward on behalf of our constituents, because we ultimately believe that it, there won't be a benefit there, in the hopes that you will, you know, vote to, to opt out. Excuse me. Mr. Gierbaugh?
Is this truly an opt-out, or is this more an advisory requesting that we, that we're somewhat making a motion or somehow remove this as a, as a plan in the future? As we opted out on the one, when we voted for the one within the county after everyone backed out of it, is this going to have any force for that we can really not be taxed in the future, or this is just an advisory? We'd like this to happen?
It's a request to be take, for Washtenaw County to be taken out of the bill, correct?
Right.
Correct. Well, that would take it out.
Yeah. But that's just advisory. It's nothing that we can opt out at this point.
Correct. It says, Mr. Burgoyne said it is a request essentially to the governor's office to do something different, or to the legislature to, to-
No, no, I understand. I just want to make sure that everyone out there, that doesn't mean that we're guaranteeing that we're opting out.
I make a motion to approve and to opt out.
I'll second.
So a motion by Burgoyne, seconded by Gierbaugh, to approve and adopt the resolution opting out of the proposed regional transit authority. Mr. Rhodes?
I may be a bit of an outlier on this particular issue. I took time to read through the entire Senate Bill 909, as well as the House Fiscal Agency analysis of that particular bill. And I'm not sure that I'm in agreement with some of the content of this particular resolution, although, as was just stated, passing or not of this resolution doesn't have any actual impact, other than potential influence on whether or not Washtenaw County is removed. But in, in going down through the resolution, the third whereas, where funding will support transportation service outside of our county disproportionate to what it receives, the bill itself states that a minimum of 85% of each county's funds would have to be expended within that county. So that's a minimum amount. And actually, 85% is probably not too bad, considering how things happen. And things have to be approved by the electorate. So even if Washtenaw County were to remain within this regional transit authority, the authority itself cannot pass any assessments, fees, anything that would raise funds without a majority of the representatives who's method of selecting them is contained within the bill. It would require seven-ninths. So the intent is that there would be 10 people on the board, nine voting members representing the counties, two from each of the four counties, one from the city of Detroit, and then one non-voting state representative on there. So seven-ninths of those folks, including at least one from every single county, has to agree before any financial commitments that could be approved, that then might be passed on, would have to be passed on to the electorate for approval. I understand that Washtenaw County not having a population center, in theory, if something came out and it was voted on by the electorate of everybody within the region, we wouldn't have the, the population to overturn things necessarily. But if we have two representatives on that board, at least one of them has to approve it, or it doesn't move anywhere. So then there's the next one down, contains onerous and offensive provisions related to consideration of rail-based transportation. I could only find one place in that whole bill where it said anything that could be construed that way. And that was, again, within the election process, the approval process, where it would require unanimous approval. So nine out of nine would have to approve light rail, as opposed to seven out of nine approving something having to do with buses. Hard for me to believe that out of that group of nine folks, they couldn't figure out a way to negotiate something that might entail that. And the bill itself does talk about light rail. I understand that the bill is slanted towards bus service, and that makes sense to me because the roads and the streets were already there. That's a transit system that could be put into place relatively quickly, as opposed to trying to put a light rail system together, which could take decades before it actually happened. And I firmly believe we need some form, better form, of regional transportation within our area, just like we needed more within the county. Now, the county's going to have to work on that, and they'll come back to us at some point in time. But there are, there are just a lot of folks within our, within our community. They may not be active. They may not even be voters, but they rely on public transportation to get around, to get to work, and to try to earn a living for themselves and their families. And they pay taxes because of that. So I suspect that I would probably end up voting to not approve this particular resolution as it's currently worded. The other thing, down at the bottom of note that I made, that a Senate bill, actually, this was in a House Fiscal Agency analysis, it appears that the counties that become part of this regional transit system would be eligible to receive something called municipal credits under the 1967 Public Act 204, in the amount of several million dollars. There was a question as to whether or not individual municipalities within the counties might also get those municipal credits. And I have to say, I don't know what those municipal credits are. I don't understand that process. But that, that fact is stated in there. So I would much rather have the county be involved in helping to set up this system because they have the ability to stop it. Two representatives from a county, both voting no on something would stop anything from moving forward. And I think it's a lot better to be involved in something than it is to not at all, and then sit back and commit afterwards to that. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Well, based on your comments, I, I would probably be amenable, and I'm always speaking for myself, in removing the fifth whereas with a sentence that begins with SB 909 contains onerous and offensive language provisions related to the consideration of rail-based transportation. I can see that that, I would concede that that is maybe a little bit of hyperbole. However, I think the third whereas, Washtenaw County funding will support a transportation service outside of our county disproportionate to what it receives, I think that that is a logical and accurate statement. When you take into account how densely populated the urban centers are in the three adjacent counties, I think it's an extremely high likelihood that Washtenaw County would be on the low end of that 85%. I, I think- I think if you just crunch the numbers, it's a certainty. And so for every dollar, in theory, that we send to the RTA, we would be getting eighty-five cents back on that dollar. And again, I don't think it's fair. And you're absolutely right that there are provisions and safeguards in place where, that do not allow a taxing authority to just appear out of nowhere. But again, I would reiterate a point I made earlier, that in these really lean economic times, our people are going to feel pressure from a whole host of entities requesting additional revenue to fund core vital services. And I just, I don't think our constituents, our residents, would view this as a core vital service. So again, I support the inclusion of the third whereas in the resolution as a whole. But if you were amenable to it, and it could get you to support the resolution, I would be acceptable with removing the fifth whereas. Additional discussion? Mr. Burgoyne.
I have a motion on the floor.
Yep, you do.
And I would be willing to amend my motion to drop the onerous paragraph. And I would be willing to amend my motion to change the word "will" in the third whereas to "may." So if that's, if that would be acceptable with whoever made the second.
I believe that was Mr. Gearbaugh.
That's acceptable.
You accept that? Okay. Then we'll consider it amended. So in the third whereas, the word "will" is changed to "may," and then the fifth whereas is completely eliminated. Is that correct, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gearbaugh, you're comfortable with that? Okay? Any additional discussion?
[inaudible]
Yeah. Mr. Burgoyne, just for the sake of clarification, I want to make sure you're amenable with the entire motion, which is not only to acknowledge the verbal report, but also to approve and adopt the resolution.
Yes, I am, and I have additional comments.
Okay. Please.
I agree with the mayor that there are going to be challenges over the next year. And where there are added taxes, there may be a need to raise revenues locally for fairly desperate situation. And to do something like this, which appears to probably give us less than we put in, probably is not the right way to go now. And if this gets going, there may be an opportunity later for us to join in if we feel it's to Celine's advantage. So that's why I'm thinking that at this time, it's probably not right.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Additional comments? Mr. Gearbaugh.
Similar to concerns, I think, that the county had with its own plan, there just isn't enough clarification of what's going to be proposed. Some of the things that are in here or indicated are already being handled by private considerations. My concerns, too, is that this was rushed through at that last hour, when a lot of legislation went through without much thought at all. And although I'm encouraged, I want to see something change in our transit in that aspect, I'm just concerned that we don't have enough of a say in an aspect that's going to be controlled by three-thirds of a, three-quarters of a, out of four. So I think potentially there's more influence that would happen on that side than on the county at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Mr. Rhodes?
Just wanted to say that I appreciate the effort that's been put into this, and the opportunity given me to state my thoughts and opinions on this regional rapid transit system. And I am more comfortable with it, with these amendments than I was prior to that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any additional discussion? Okay? Hearing none? All those in favor of Mr. Burgoyne's motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to discussion items, commissioning committee reports. Mr. Peters.
Just to say that the Parks Commission is still looking for volunteers. We need somebody else, one more person on our commission. If anybody would like to join, just contact City Hall. It's a great group of people, and we deal with the parks, and it's a lot of fun. And another thing I'd like to point out, and that is this article here, in case anybody, I think the mayor touched on this in his speech for the State of the City. And Bloomberg Business Week has selected Celine as the best place in the state to raise your kids. And I think that's really something we can all be proud of. I think that's really an amazing award that to have. And I have to, since this is the committee commission reports, and I'm, I rep the Celtic Committee, I have to state that in their report, Bloomberg mentioned the Celtic Festival with a link to our festival as one of the reasons it's one of the best places to raise your kids in Celine, because it certainly is a very child-friendly festival. So I think that's really special. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Appreciate you sharing that. It is a great distinction, and we're very proud to receive that recognition. Any other commission committee reports? Well, since we're on the topic of commissioning committees, I want to refer back to a previous motion that was adopted tonight, which is the approval of citizen appointments to boards and commissions. We had a lot of vacancies this year, and I thank my colleagues who worked with me to fill those vacancies. We found some really exceptional people to serve on our boards and commissions. But we still have a number of vacancies. We have two vacancies on arts and culture, one on Celtic Festival, one on environmental commission, and one on our Parks Commission. So for those of you in the audience, those of you who will be reading about this council meeting at home, or who will be watching it later, if you'd like to serve your community, I encourage you to fill out an application online, and we'll see what we can do to assist you and accommodate your needs and your desires. And if we cannot put you on a board because of the lack of vacancies, we'll keep that application on file and accommodate you when a vacancy becomes available. So please consider serving our city in one of those capacities. It's of vital importance. Mr. Roth.
Honorable mayor, this item 1306 was removed from the general consensus part of our agenda. I was wanting, I'd like to make the motion now if we approve the...
No, it was just amended. We approved it already.
Is there a replacement?
Yeah. There were some additions to the board and commission appointments from when you would have received that memo in your packet on Thursday.
Sorry for my misunderstanding.
No, no, it's quite all right.
I thought it was removed from the group that we need to act on it now.
Just amended. No, it's quite all right, Mr. Roth. Any additional commission or committee reports? Okay? Reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
I brought the same little flyer in that Councilmember Peters did about Celine being the best place to raise kids in Michigan. And this came out on December 18th, and I don't know what we're doing to publicize this. We ought to be standing out alongside the highway waving this at everybody going by or something. This is a, this is a great, great piece of recognition. And what are we doing about it? Anybody got anything underway that...
Well, I was just speaking to City Manager Campbell. I think it would be appropriate to try and contact Bloomberg directly and see if we can't get somebody from the corporate office to come down and make a presentation at a minimum. But if you have other suggestions, other ideas, I would be more than happy to entertain them. You're absolutely right. It's an amazing distinction. We're very proud of it, and we should do our utmost to promote it and advertise it.
Yeah, we ought to get it up on every website that we can think of. We should get it up in Ann Arbor. We ought to rent a billboard, for crying out loud, on 23 and 94, spend some money and let people know about this.
Mr. Burgoyne.
I think the schools are part of, a strong part of the community also, being recognized here. So I think maybe the city government and the schools could collaborate in bringing out this information.
It's a good idea. I don't see any reason why we can't do that, Mr. Campbell. Well, we'll work on that, Mr. Rhodes, and we'll bring that back for future consideration and discussion, because you're absolutely right. There's much more we can do to promote that. It's an important distinction, and we should be proud of it.
And we should, we should do it quickly before it fades away.
Yep. You've got it. So actually, maybe we'll see if we can make some progress on that front in the next week and report back at our next meeting, a week from tonight.
Great.
Thank you. Any additional reports or other announcements?
Mr. Campbell, did you just share with me, do you want to present that now? Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a plug, I know council knows about this, and then some other folks do as well, but the Celine Scene is our new weekly e-newsletter that we took its maiden voyage, if you will, this last Friday. So it's on our, you can sign up on our website, the city website, they're on the left-hand corner on our homepage. You can sign up for the e-newsletter. We had actually, if you may recall, we actually talked about this a few years ago, but that was the same time that we, timeframe that we introduced the Be Celine website to our community, and we didn't want the two to contradict, or not contradict, but compete against each other. And so now we're pushing this out, and so we will promote community information, activities, and we'll do that on a weekly basis. So sign up. You can also, I know there's information on our Facebook page, et cetera, so please sign up and get information.
In the first Celine Scene update, did we mention something about our Bloomberg News recognition?
No, we did not, and that's...
There we go.
So there we go.
There's another opportunity.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Campbell regarding the weekly email update? No? Okay. Then moving on to the third item under discussion items, which is the signed ordinance. I believe at one of our previous council meetings, or maybe it was at one of our goal and strategy sessions, a number, a few of you brought up the signed ordinance. And so I wanted to provide that to you all this evening. And as I was reviewing the document myself, I was reminded by, of the fact that when the changes were approved in 2009, only myself and Mr. Rhodes were on council at the time. So how things change in four years. So again, there was a very thorough review and change, changes, excuse me, done to the policy in 2009, but some of you still have concerns, and that's reasonable. I encourage you to take a look at the document between now and our next council meeting. If you have questions, have concerns, have clauses you'd like to have looked at, please be prepared to talk about them at one of our next council meetings. And then I would remind you that the proper protocol would be for us to take your questions, your concerns, your thoughts, forward them to the planning commission, for planning commission to review, and then hopefully they would discharge it and bring it to council at a future date for consideration. So again, please take a look at it between now and our next council meeting. I'm not sure we'll bring it back at our next council meeting, but we'll certainly bring it back at one of our council meetings in February. And again, this directly relates to a goal or objective I think we have, that I articulated in my State of the City address, which is systematically and thoroughly looking at all of our policies and ordinances to make sure that they're not too onerous on our businesses. Okay? Very good. And then finally, under discussion items, we have the water and sewer rate study. Mr. Burgoyne.
I had emailed some information out, so I'm going to just pass down a copy to each Almost a month ago, I requested that the expenditure not be made on this item as not being needed. And at the time, I was not on council, but I offered the information. I still don't think it's needed. I don't know why we're spending the funds. As I listed here, we have water and sewer rates that are appropriately doing what they were designed to do. They're going to carry two or three years into the future. We don't need another study at this time. It could actually work against us to have another study. So I'm bringing this up again. I think, I don't think we should be spending where we don't have to spend.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Do you care to comment?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From those comments, from Mr. Burgoyne, that he brought up at the second of the two strategic planning sessions, staff is reviewing it, and due to vacations of staffing and whatnot, we've not been able to come back. I'm hopeful, I'm hoping to be able to have that conversation towards the end of this week and possibly be able to bring back a report, because we are certainly analyzing that to determine whether or not we, as staff, believe that, whether or not we need it. So if it's deemed that we can put it off a year or so, then certainly concur with Mr. Burgoyne if that's what the facts reveal. So we just want to, because some time had expired from the time when we first started with this study for the improvements at the PCF. So certainly, we do appreciate those thoughts, and we are analyzing it, and so hopefully I can bring back a report next Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, my issue was that the city council was asked to authorize expenditure in November, and if you authorize an expenditure and you tell the consultant to go ahead, they will go ahead and burn through the money. I wanted it suspended while it's being looked at, so that the money just doesn't, you know, dissipate.
Correct. They're not moving forward at this time.
Oh, they're not.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I was concerned both from the consultant point of view and from staff time.
Yep, absolutely.
And I do think that I'd be happy to discuss this more when you come back, but I do foresee that a rate study is not needed for three years, and if you can save fifteen thousand dollars, we should.
Oh, certainly.
Anything else, Mr. Burgoyne?
No.
No, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Mr. Peters?
Can I step back to the signed ordinance for just a moment?
Absolutely.
Because I sort of was a proponent of this review, and just to share a couple of comments with folks, I've heard recently from three different business owners, some concerns on signs. And I'll just give you, for instance, I think on US 12, we have about thirty thousand cars a day to go up and down US 12. And if you look at the Salt Trail sign, it really doesn't tell you what's in that shopping center. You would never know there's a pet store, a vitamin store, a restaurant back there if you're coming through Celine, say you're coming from Tecumseh into Ann Arbor or something. The same with the Oaks. It's just a sign that says the Oaks, and it's not very descriptive. You'd never know there's a sub shop or drugstore back in there. So some of these business owners were concerned about that, and they were hoping maybe we could review some of these things and do something so they get their brand out there, and they're all struggling, they're all trying to get business right now. And I think we should try to help as much as possible. And they also had some concerns on A-frame signs. We had some business owners here earlier who I think were waiting for the comment section, but they couldn't wait any longer, so maybe we can catch them in the next meeting. But that was sort of just my suggestion, why we talk about this, that the business owners do have some ideas that may help highlight their businesses and bring them in.
Well, it's absolutely a good, a good thought and a good suggestion. That's why we added it to the discussion item. And obviously, it goes without saying that, you know, what we're attempting to do here is to find the balance between allowing businesses the opportunity to promote themselves while maintaining their quality of life.
Absolutely.
But again, it's appropriate that we thoroughly and systematically review this ordinance to make sure it's not too onerous. So appreciate those comments, and I would encourage you and my other council colleagues to, again, take a thorough look at this document between now and our next, or not, maybe not our next meeting, but one of our February meetings, so that we can have a more substantive discussion about what we'd like to see changed. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order tonight, folks?
Would you, are you going to address these pieces of paper?
Sure, yeah. Mr. Campbell, do you want to talk about the items that you cited at the day of this evening? I apologize that we didn't reference those earlier, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are a result of the email that Councilmember Burgoyne had sent out requesting some information, such as the budget, bondholder information, the general fund projection spreadsheets, photocopy of the Tifa district, zoning map. So a number of those things, the city council already had, you all had. So essentially, the items that you did, that you had not had, we gave you those, and we certainly gave all the other items to Mr. Burgoyne as well for reference material, as you, you know, you consider things throughout, you know, the course of your tenure. So those are informational items that Mr. Burgoyne had requested, and of course, we, you know, we want to make sure we give council, everybody, the same information.
Additionally, this application for recognition of tax exemption, which is submitted by the Celtic Festival Committee, I believe was an item that Mr. Roth and several other council members requested, following our work meeting with the Celtic Festival about a month ago. So that's why it's provided for you this evening as well. Mr. Burgoyne.
The reason I requested this for myself was, as we look for goals for the coming year, it's important to see where we are and what the circumstances are. And the circumstances in general are essentially this. Our debt load has increased. We used to have about five percent of the bonds that we could issue that were issued. We now have over half. So our debt load has increased. What that means is we have mortgage amounts, we make mortgage payments, just like homeowners, we just do it on bonds. Our mortgage amounts are taking away cash from our other activities, because, you know, there are costs in the budget. The other aspect that I wanted to look at was the budgets themselves and how the projections are going. Well, it appears that the projections show that unless there's a change... Well, it appears that the projections show that unless there's a change in direction, and the direction of the municipal budgets is like trying to turn a ship, you have to make slow and progressive changes to try to save costs that you don't have to spend, and try to find revenues, and try to fit things in. It looks like there's maybe, just guesstimating, just looking at it, a third of a million-dollar gap there in our next year. So, in looking at, I think it's important for us to have that perspective as we try to help.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Gearbaugh.
Yeah, and I believe we identified that last year when we were going through our budget process and everything, so it's good to have a confirmation of what we discussed last year.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order this evening? Okay. Hearing none, we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any public comments? No? Any additional business to come before city council this evening? Our next meeting is next Monday, January 14th, then we meet again on the 4th and 11th of February. We do not need to excuse any absences, because no members are absent, so I would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:03 PM.
So, moved.
Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh, seconded by Ms. Tihar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned.